Okay, we're on.
Okay.
It's time to call the...
Are we Q?
Yeah, are we though?
There was always one in the box before.
Yeah, well, we couldn't find it. So, at any rate, it's time to call the 711th, 2014 regular meeting of the Rundle Land Board of Order. We'll start off with a roll call.
James Blauer.
Our game.
Josh Kinderman.
Rich Kenon.
Tom McInnes.
Pat Redway Plainer.
You all have your agendas, so I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. So I can't.
Okay, all those in favor?
No. Can't say that.
On the agenda tonight, sorry, I should've told you earlier, we're looking at zoning ordinance amendments, the Gateway District, and then a new format within the view of the schedule of what's going on. And then we'll have a plan as you look. Does anybody in the public have a comment on things that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes for August 28th, 2014. We had two sets of minutes, don't we? Don't we have the sidewalk from that bed? Yeah. Right, the sidewalk over in A.
So which one do you want?
Uh, we'll do the sidewalk mid A first. Any hours corrections, anything anybody saw?
Well, I'll move through the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Minutes.
Right. Okay, all those in favor? And abstentions?
One inch, name or two?
Nope, two abstentions. All in favor, two abstentions. Onto the minutes of the meeting.
Since Hannah isn't here to record, we should know the extensions, Dr. Kinderman and Co.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let's see why it's filled.
Yes. Okay, onto the minutes of August 28th. Did anybody see anything in here that needed to be fixed?
I move that we approve the minutes from August 28th.
Second.
All those in favor? One abstention?
One.
I would ask that if anybody in the audience speaks, that you stand up and state your name, because it's being recorded and there's no way for the secretary to know who he is without our telling him. Okay. Zoning ordinance, Gateway District. Mr. Plainer, please.
Gateway District is a district that was approved by the Comprehensive Plan Committee and recommended and approved by the townspeople on June 11th of this year. Essentially, the Gateway District is a small, is a very small district. Its intention is to be close to the, it's actually on the Bedford border. And its purpose is best summated in the document that was approved by the town on June 11th, that town meeting. Its designation applies to the northern end of Route 1 quarters and intended as a mixed-use district accounting residential business and community uses. The Gateway District will permit small to medium-scale retail office services and community uses as well as single and multifamily dwellings. Residential subdivisions, as defined by state statute, will be excluded. Development standards, the Gateway District will permit a small to medium-scale wholesale, retail office and service uses as well as community uses and low-impact manufacturing. Residential uses, both single and multifamily, that are part of mixed-use projects will be permitted, but new single-family subdivisions will be excluded. Small lot sizes and limited setbacks shall encourage a maximum use of land, suitable land, available for development. So that is essentially the description of the district. And the intent is basically to create a gateway into the town from Bedford. Essentially, the existing CCS district is a gateway from Kennebuck into Rundle. And this one is going to be extending basically from the Bedford line. I want to get the map up. Basically, here's the Bedford line right here, and this area up here. This is Portland Road, Route 1. This is Old Post Road here. This is the Boston Main Railroad. Proctor Road comes down as such. Right now, the whole district is BI district. And it's, actually has a lot of residential in it, and it has many existing uses. It's a mixed-use district. The intent of this is to create sort of a small character area in some of the lots here that are small, and actually in many cases, very, very small. And to create sort of a character area, there will be a gateway into the town. It'll provide for a lot of uses, a lot of different uses. We're concentrating on essentially providing smaller scale uses than BI basically encourages, mainly because we have small lots, and also because we have existing built character in this area. We have a built area in which we have a lot of residential, as you all know here, and interspersed with some businesses. And the irony is that the town line, as we all probably know, really is up at Rundle Motors, right up here, Rundle Auto. And most people think the town line really begins on the other side of the overpass. When the reality is, the town line is way up here.
Yes.
Well, a number of the property owners in here have been asking us if they can do something, what they can do to make their land more usable, how they could divide it, what they could do to create sort of a different character, especially the antique store there. They've been asking us for years to figure out a way that we can encourage more of their scale kind of development in this area, especially since we have some small lots here to work with, and how we can get, how we can get more...
It ain't that smart, is it?
Oh, it's not.
Takes a second.
Takes a second. Essentially, to try to get some character up there in this area, so they can actually do a little bit more business. A number of other property owners would like to subdivide their land, so they can basically put some businesses up there. Right now, they feel that they need to subdivide that land and have more possibilities. So basically, this is a very small area, incorporates a large parcel of basically Proctor Road. Proctor Road comes down here. This is a very large parcel, unfortunately, most of it's wet. Most of it's wetlands. It goes all the way down to County Auto here. That's pretty much the line, and then we get into larger lots, and we have some industrial uses, as we know, down in Champagne, and we revert back to our business district. Champagne Energy Headquarters, just, we identified that. That's in that little pie-shaped area, right in, between Old Post Road and Portland Road. A lot of constraints in here, we have a lot of wetlands, we have small lots, lots of wetlands and existing homes in there. And the object was to try to come up with a district that would encourage some smaller-scale business than the large BI district provides, allow some more subdivision in there, so there are more possibilities for smaller businesses, and to encourage some residential. Because right now, BI district, as you all know, there is no residential in the BI district. So this would allow, we have residential, we have a residential pattern in here. There's no reason to make all the residences in there continue to be non-conforming uses. So what we're going to be doing is allowing them to be conforming residential uses and allow continuation of that if necessary. Otherwise, we'll be encouraging business. You'll notice also that the Complain Committee continued the same thing. They've been continuing with all these mixed-use business districts, and that was, although residences are still permitted, subdivisions would not be. So, and essentially, taking the land that's owned business could not be used for subdivision purposes, putting in large residential subdivision. But then again, in this district, that's not going to happen, because there's really not a lot of land to do that. So that's essentially the overview of the district, as presented by the Complain Committee. And this is the boundaries that we're proposing right now. Yes, we're...
Couple questions. One, is that Gateway District, where does the water pressure stop? Does it stop at the pumping station?
Yeah.
So it turns out that actually farther down at the pumping station, there is no water pressure.
Well...
So, I mean, if you're trying to make it...
You mean down here?
No, no. Where is your pumping station?
Which pumping station? You mean Bedford pumping station?
Why is it around though?
It's on the, on the...
Just across from Champagne's. Oh, okay.
Well, it's farther down. Next question.
Here's Champagne's right here. This is the end of the bridge right here.
Yep.
This land is actually, because I'm in the bridge.
Next question is, is Rundle actually going to move the sign to show that the Gateway District's in Rundle? Or are we still going to stay in Bedford? Because it turns out the sign is in Limbo. If you want to turn out, call it Rundle.
I think the move would be to put the sign where the boundary is.
Where it is, a town line there. There was it one time years ago, something there, but in the great wish of deciding everything, they didn't want to turn out, include Rundle on that side of the bridge.
Well, I can't speak to that.
That's what we have presently.
Yep, I can speak to the fact that we do have, our borders up here, as you all know, and the sign's right, right in the top, down in here, right about there.
Where?
About there.
Can't see it. The marker's on the wood in there.
Okay. Right in here.
Well, just where the pumping station is.
Yep.
Right after the car, the car quality lot, in turn, where the big empty lot is, right there, next to the car dealership there, Country Kitchen, uh, Country Auto.
Yep. Yep. So, yeah, I think the objective would be to create a real entry at, as you come into Rundle. That's the objective. What can we do about that? Yeah, there's grant monies we could probably, we'll go for to essentially help move that sign, and to create a little bit more of a beautification around that sign, because that's when those grants do come available, and they come available from the state. The town would most likely do that, but the town's got to have a policy to do that. The town's got to make a decision to do that, and the Gateway District right now is a district that will benefit from those kinds of improvements that you can get by state grants. So I would imagine, Marty, I won't speak for the selectmen, but I would imagine if we can get those grants and we can get this district going, they'd probably want to move the sign to the board.
They want to move it in there.
Probably do.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would strongly make that recommendation to the board. I'm pretty sure Public Works can do it at a very limited cost to us. So I think it'd be a great idea, if that's going, you know, we want to identify where our borders are, it'd be a great idea to sign a little closer to the border.
Also, you don't want to advocate a whole section of our business district to Bedford. What we're doing right now, everybody assumes that's all Bedford.
Is this following lot lines?
Yep. One place it doesn't follow lot lines is across here. That's the only place it doesn't, and down in here. This is all one large lot back in here. That's the only, that's the only, that's the only area where it does not follow lot lines. Otherwise, it falls entirely.
And what was the reason it didn't, right there?
I mean, it... Because it's a huge parcel. Because this is, this goes all the way out like this. This is all...
That's where our wood structure is, we're going to go. So, and they...
And you don't want to, and first, number one, you don't want to, the objective is not to take land that is actually more suitable for industrial use back there and put it into small business.
Along here.
Second of all, this is, this is about the only access we have to rail. We have some serious site constraints down there, we have a lot of wetlands, we have a lot of water just in general, but this is the only real area that we have great access to the Boston Main Railroad in a location that's zoned for it, that we could put a spur if that were to occur, if there was a tighter... Spurs are not as popular as they used to be, but still, the possibility exists, and so we don't want to lose that option of having that spur to create access there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have one other question. In the Complain Description that was approved by town, did they identify borders?
There was a map.
There was a map, there was a map that was approved. I'm questioning, you said our job was to approve it, but town has already approved.
Our job is to, is to refine the map if necessary, because the map is very small.
Was there a map like there was for town?
Yes, there was. There was a map.
Which means like how it's cornered, that map has been approved by the town.
By the town. By the town. And this, this, this boundary...
It's a bar paper.
You'll find that this actually is, follows the same boundary as shown in that. There's nothing, there's no deviation from it. So, it doesn't mean that, you know, if the board wanted to make some deviations from that, they can, but...
Well, I will state to me a concern, and that is, that large lot in BI is potentially a large business subdivision. And I know that's what the owner would like to do with it eventually, if given an opportunity. So it doesn't make sense to cut that off from access to Route 1.
Well, it's not cutting it off. The story can go through.
How not?
It can still go through. Put a road through it.
But if it's not zoned for, I mean, then it would become a BI, a connection to BI. Is that allowed in Gateway?
Sure, absolutely, no doubt.
Does it have a direct...
Well, yes, of course you can go back and, yeah, and I've talked, the owner's called me a couple times on this too. I mean, he likes the idea of having an option to do something else there, maybe make him a few small lots until such time that he can subdivide, or he can actually get a business to park in there. Until the market is suitable to do this, this gives him a few more options. But this would not prevent him from, we're not cutting him off, it's not like we're putting a property line there. Of course, you can go through that district to get to BI, absolutely.
Question, would that BI, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you can go through, but if, let's see, if I remember right, this is where that lot connects, and I think, I think here too, I'm right. So maybe even here.
No, that's where, I'm sorry, you're right. It's this one.
One of those.
Right here.
Right. So, I mean, if you're cutting out chunks of that property, you might be able to go through, but you don't have access to that property to do the rest of the development in that area.
It's his property. Yeah, he can do...
Not if you're in different districts.
Sure, you, you want those two separate districts.
No, no, if we, if we make chunks of the parcel, the chunks of that parcel that are above Route 1 into Gateway, and it's a significant use, I don't know, you know, it may or may not limit access or limit developability, but since that's the one major lot that is accessible for large development, I think we want to be careful how we zone what borders on Route 1.
I'm not sure I agree with you. I think you could put a road through there.
Well, a road through, if we allow that, and also, you also check or disconnect significant pieces of that parcel from the rest of it. So I don't know what the, what the developability of those areas are compared to the rest of it. But I wouldn't want to take highly developable areas and make those inaccessible for large business development.
Yeah, see, I don't think we would, you know. You know, granted, we would have to write in the fact that you could put a road in there, but I don't see where we...
Why would you have to do that? I'm sorry, but I'm confused again. If he owns it, he can do whatever he wants with that. And if he wants to build a building, he can build a building. If he wants to put a road just to connect to B1, he can do that. There's absolutely no prohibition anywhere from there in, or in any district.
What if you, what if you come up with a business park that extends down into here? You can't do that.
Would depend on his uses.
Yeah.
I mean, it would depend, I think if, doing that provides some flexibility to have high visibility, potentially higher profit-making businesses up front, and have, have a more industrial-scale business park in the back. I mean, just because the zone line is there, doesn't mean we're creating a separate lot line or property boundary. I mean, he can, if he owns, that piece of land comes out through Route 1, he can still get access to it. You know, and potentially put a, put a use up in the front that's, that's different than...
I guess my concern is, are we looking at individual uses? If you're doing a business park development, that whole park is the use, not the individual items in that park. You following what I'm saying?
I don't necessarily agree with that, because I think the uses that would go in there would have to abide by that zone.
That could be, if there was a business park that the fund on Route 1, that could be a retail use right there, and the rest could be industrial.
Well, my assumption that a business park, if it's, if it's a coordinated, an actual development, like a subdivision, if you will, a business subdivision, that would be the use, not the individual businesses within that park. But if I'm wrong on that, then there's no issue.
But we have, but that would be available in the BI anyway. It wouldn't make any difference if the front of it was part of the Gateway District. And where that business park would be, would actually be in BI, which is an acceptable use.
But I'm, I'm just concerned that part of it might extend, just because of land constraints and things like that, because we're very constrained in that area. Part of it might extend initially into the proposed Gateway District, and that would prevent it from doing that. The restrictions we put on Gateway would prevent it from extending into Gateway. Let's keep that in mind as we, as we look at this.
That's a discussion we get.
Another, another part of our regulations says lots split by boundaries. If the larger piece is more than 50%, he could use that whole front and actually in that area.
Does our new ordinance say that?
No.
I don't think so.
No, it doesn't.
It's still, we haven't addressed it.
Nobody's taken that out. And it is, it is in the graphs of what we had so far, so...
Ted, do you know approximately how, how deep that, that, that zone is at that location along that side of the road?
Offhand, no. No, I think it's about, I think it's about 250, 300 feet. I didn't measure it. I can't do that. I won't measure it, but this is, you know, I can't scale this. But, well, I could actually scale it.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, if the use of 50, it's a scale.
Yeah, see, just trying to keep it aligned with all the others.
When you touch a screen...
It's a smart, the smart board.
Does anybody touch a screen? No, I think it's because this thing has, has a short...
Smart board.
Touch a screen, the board will...
Smart board, just not that smart.
Oh, yes, it is.
No, it's not that bad. 150 feet. Just make sure that I'm...
I think, I'll draw, this would improve the options for...
About 300 feet.
Well, I would just want to make sure that we don't limit the options. If we improve the options, I have no problem, but I wouldn't want to limit, because it's a major property in that area.
Yeah, there's, you know, actually, John, when you're mentioning, I mean, I wouldn't be adverse to changing this line at all, because there's a gradient issue here.
Yeah, but that doesn't really have access to Route 1.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't. Route 1's, I mean, this is the overpass. And so this land's down below, it actually has better access to the railroad.
Right.
This, this is, as I said, taken from the, the Complain Map, I mean, I would be more than happy to see that one go away, because it makes no sense. You can't get access to Route 1 from there, so what's the point? This is, for businesses, along Route 1.
And, you know, that's the only place we are not following lot lines, is for that parcel.
Well, because we want to take it up to County Auto. That's who uses it. Take it across. These are all lot lines.
Ted, do you know if the owner of that parcel has, has been active in our rezoning discussions?
No, I've talked to him, I talked to him about a year ago about this, because he was interested, you know, when we proposed Gateway District, he was interested in what the implications would be, what the options, and what possibilities would have.
Did he seem to have reservations?
No, at that time he didn't. But certainly need to, I think we're going to have to...
But he's been engaged in conversation.
We've had those conversations in the past, yeah. Yeah, we did.
Does he live in the blue area? Am I thinking of the right version?
No, he doesn't live there.
Another question on the boundaries, on either side of Proctor Road is still something to be in AI, in fact, the property owners.
Well, you know, there's still BI because, you know, I'm not, I'm not real, I'm not sure I want to change this up.
There's use to it now that...
Well, there is a use here, yeah, there's a use in here right now. There's use here, non-residential use here.
But residences are there also.
And there's also residences. And there's, there's non-residential, there's residential and non-residential uses on that part of Proctor Road, we have a garage there, rather than a sense of garage there.
Small.
Yeah. Proctor Road is for you. But, it's, yeah, we have, we have some, we have some, we have this use here, and the question is, I mean, do we want to downgrade this when they really don't have... That, that property owner is really actually doing residential, quite frankly, right now.
Yeah, it's a multi-family, isn't it?
Well, no.
Right, right on the curve? That's a, that's a multi-family.
Yeah. I, yeah, I don't think he wants to do business. The thing, you want to be residential, but then I'm, then I have residential, business, residential, you know, I have a checkboard. Because this is, this is business, this is business, and then there's residential.
You're trying to have the checkboard up the top of the outside.
I do have the checkboard, yeah. And then actually, this property right here, this is, and we have this in here, but this is huge amount of wetlands. You probably all know this whole wetland area in here, it's very large. But this also has a waterway that goes all the way back to, it's in BI to here. It's a tough area, it's a very, very tough area. Best places are right in front, along Proctor Road. And they would like to be able to subdivide. Some of those properties would like to subdivide because they can't manage part.
About 30 years ago, I was on the planning board, and we had this, this is, we did this and that, and as soon as it was set, then they would ask for storage, we didn't know, we didn't have storage, and they would move out. It's almost like... Because if they buy storage, it's going to be almost impossible to flush garbage from over there. That's a problem.
That is a problem, because from what I understand, they don't want to let us use their facilities.
I'm not sure.
Well, they won't let us, if we extend up to their facility, which is a long way.
No, from what I, from what I had heard, they don't have the capacity, and would not be interested...
To the bridge?
In our hooking into their system.
I'm just saying, no, I'm, what I'm asking is, is not the entire BI district, what I'm saying is... What I'm saying is, to the bridge.
To that.
The reason I say that is because of the constraints of trying to put sewer underneath and the railway and everything else, so you don't have to dig under the railway. That's why I'm saying to the bridge.
To that, I'm not sure. I just know that, I was told by somebody who works in the sewer department, they're not interested in adding any more capacity to what they have.
May I, Mr. Chair?
No.
Conversations with the city of Bedford, it would be prohibitively expensive for the town of Rundell to service just the north side of the railroad because it'd have to be a forced main place there. And the difficulty, as Marty said, the difficulty, you're not allowed to hang a sewer line from an overpass, so tunneling under the railroad is what made it. So they could do it according to the city manager, but it would cost so much money for such a little land that it really wouldn't necessarily work.
Gee, they don't want us to hang it.
No, probably. For some reason, they have to.
I can imagine why.
Hang sewer from. But they're doing all the pumping water.
Yes.
Doing all the work.
Let's give them.
Sure, it has enough heat in it, so it doesn't freeze.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussions about where the zone? I'd like to hear from the fellows that owns that big section in the back, just to get clarity as to how they feel.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that we probably should follow the same model as we do the Town House Corner in the sense that we have, we notify, we have a meeting with all the property owners. Because that did not happen, that has not happened yet. And I think it's beneficial that we do that because we will have, we'll have an opportunity here for neighbors who might, resident, existing residents that might have a concern, or existing business owners that might have a concern. I mean, so far, what I've heard from business property owners in there has been, has been positive, but then there are business property owners that may not, that we haven't talked to. But I, a lot of them have come in to talk to me, you know, individually, they kind of like the idea.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
You might ask if there's anybody in the audience that is from that district that was speaking up here.
I couldn't. I couldn't, but right now, we were just discussing the fact that we want to contact the people that are in the area.
Right, if you're contacting them, there might be somebody here who we can contact already.
But to the planner's point, we made the mistake in TCD of not contacting people ahead of, ahead of time to make sure that they were amenable to the idea. I think his suggestion is that we contact everybody in advance now, instead of putting together all of the work. Let's find out what, what people are like. And if there's anybody in this, in the audience that does live in the area, I would be interested in hearing what they have to say. Anybody lived on that way? Apparently not.
I didn't know.
Yeah, and no, I agree.
Oh, and they worked out in that area?
I don't live there, I don't work there, not under kindergarten, comprehensive plan committee. I do have a suggestion, however, again, in light of what has happened in previous discussions. In addition to inviting the landowners that are actually in the district, also the immediate abutters because they are impacted just as well as the landowners in the district.
And I think that would be an excellent idea.
Ted, you said right now it's all in the BI? Yeah, it's all BI. All the land that's shown in blue is all BI right now. The only, yeah, it's all that, all BI. And you'll remember, this parcel was the parcel we changed into all BI. That was the one that was split in half. It was changed to all BI, so.
So we're looking at about 20 lots down in that area? And then maybe another 10 people are running against it.
Yeah, yeah. I'd go, I'd go a couple of lots deep.
Lots deep.
Because I think, no, it doesn't hurt. It hurts, the only thing that hurts is the postage one that depends a lot on it. It's smart to do it. And I, you know, if you recall, it really did help us a lot when we were dealing with the, with the, we were struggling with the, the DB2 district and, you know, whether or not people really cared about residential subdivisions there. And it wasn't until, frankly, the complaint committee said, you should really talk to these people before we finish finalize our recommendations. And we found out that our assumptions might work quite as accurate as we thought. It was a good, good discussion, we learned a lot from folks, so they learned a lot from us, and we came to a, to a good compromise. So I would recommend we do the same thing for this, that we in fact have, have a workshop with the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, can I request, when we turn around and have discussions or anything else, since we're playing colors there along the way, can we also have a color there for the distinction of where water is for hydrants or anything else, whereas we know for distance? Because we played that question mark before. And for the future, to show when we're speaking of districts, I'll turn around and have it marked on Route 1. Just by putting a little red dot or something over it. Instead of playing guessing, possibly how far or something from one spot to another.
Are you saying that you would like to have, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are you saying you want where the hydrant locations are or where the water line location is?
Hydrant.
That's going to have to be field verified because I don't have a map that shows that. Although.
You were trying along Route 1, you know where they are, you know where the property lines are, basically.
What I'm saying is I don't have a map resource to that. I'm going to have to field verify. That's not a problem, I'll do that. They'll probably be proximal.
There's one at the pumping station. And I think there's one at, at Caliato.
No, I don't think so.
That's why I feel.
Okay, good idea. I know, I know there's one at the pumping station, but it's no farther than it is.
I need to field verify. Where are those going? The next type.
So we can just.
Yes.
I don't know exactly what it is. For some reason, I thought we had, we had to put one in down at Caliato. Do you guys want to look at the conditions of the design standards tonight?
Well, you know what? May I? Sorry, I just, I didn't. I'm thinking just like the site, or the actual boundaries, it's likely worth meeting with the resident property owners before taking too deep into this. Quick backfire. That's just my opinion.
I don't think so, it's anyone.
Okay. I just asked, it's on our agenda. I do tend to agree, I think it would be good to sit with the, with the property owners and find out, first off, what they think of it. It is, it is something that we're going to have to look at because the comp plan has said they want to have this district down there.
Well, the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was saying, it's going to be one of the.
It's one of all.
Oh, come on, let's just throw the comp plan up.
Can we, Mr. Chair, can we, can we date it or not?
What do we think, maybe a month from now? Give you enough time to notify everybody?
Yeah, I mean, it's not that many people. Depends how much relief time you want. Two weeks, three weeks?
I was thinking a month, what do you guys think? You want it two weeks?
More than two.
More than daily.
Before you get people, if anybody is a southern bird, before they start flying, because guess what?
Well, that's why I'm a little concerned about a month. But most people wait till things get in there.
Uh-huh, oh, yeah. If you're going to play September, at least get, let's get it in the, in the, before the druffel gets started because otherwise, you're in October, then everybody's gone, if there's any snowbirds or anything else.
I think the first meeting of October, that'll be love before the fall is.
October night.
Yeah.
You're hard to change now.
No, but we can't do it any earlier. I don't think it would make sense to work two weeks. I think we more notice time.
I think about October 9.
About 10 days.
And that's just under a month.
Just under a month. October 9 would be a good day to put it on the agenda, and we could work, work around that. At least it will give us a chance. Yes, some of the owners may have, maybe snowbirds and head south, but there'll, there'll be some of the owners that are going to be here.
But if they have ample notice too, they can, they can go in and meet with Ted, get the gist of what's going on, provide any comments or, or issue a formal letter of comment.
I think in that communication to landowners, it would be important to give them some kind of a framework as to what we're talking about. Because if you just say we're talking about Gateway District, most people are not going to have any clue what we're talking about as far as performance standards and all of these things that we do, all those details. So if we say, oh, what would you like to see there, they're not going to have any clue. We have to provide some kind of framework of discussion so that people know what to expect and what kind of input we're looking for.
That could prove to be problematic unless we're, we're willing to sit down right now and work our way through all of the detail of what that area would look like so that we could then present it. I think if we give them what the comp plan said the Gateway District should look like, that that will give a starting point, and it gives us the same starting point. It gives, it gives everybody a chance to sit down and say, this is what the comp plan has said. Let's see if we can't work together with the people in the district to come up with something, as opposed to our coming up with something and then say, this is what we're looking at.
Well, I would respectfully disagree. I, if you recall with Town House Corners, we didn't really get public input and good discussion until we proposed something. Now, we may have to change things, but we didn't get any kind of real interaction until we put something down and said, this is what we're thinking about. What do you think?
But we also have a lot of people quite upset with us because they had no idea that this was about to happen because they, they hadn't received any correspondence from the town about the fact that we were going to be making those adjustments. All of a sudden, they got a letter that said, here, this is what we're looking at doing. And it was an after-the-fact letter. I'd rather tell them upfront, this is what we are looking at, this is what we are thinking about. And then they can come in and they can say, yeah, I like the idea, no, I don't like the idea. I, I don't think we should have, and I, I don't know what's in this. I don't think we should have boarding houses in this district. At least it would give us an idea as to what people were looking at.
Ted, I don't disagree with you, John, but I think it's also a risk of sending a list of what we think we might like and they not knowing the difference between just, just a rough draft and actually approved, set in stone regulations. And I think we've seen that as much happening, that people might be upset that, that they're thinking that they're already, looked already voted and approved to something. I'd rather keep it more to general description. I think we need to have a clean slate, so we're not presenting something that, that might be taken the wrong way.
Okay, Dan, you first.
Name is Dan DuBois. My suggestion would be to just take an extra part of the comprehensive plan. Just take that and what, you know, what the description of the district is. Put that into the letter, and that gives them a synopsis of everything that you're going to do there. You know, it talks about standards, it talks about small businesses, yada, yada, mixed use, and put that in the letter. I think that's more than what we've done in the past, and it doesn't give them the whole ordinance.
Now, Kinderin again, I agree with Dan, but I'd go a step further for the next phase. The letter should be, I would suggest, very generic. And the comp plan description is certainly that. However, when you have the folks in for a meeting, don't give them a blank slate. Give them some, a list of proposals.
Yes.
And then basically say, okay, what do you like, what do you not like? And then frame your ultimate graph from that. If you go into a meeting with a bunch of people and nothing, generally what you come out of the meeting with is a bunch of people and nothing. So having, having something on paper that they can critique and react to. And if the reaction is very favorable, you know you're on the right track. And if not, then you know you have to go back to square one.
I agree with that. I didn't, I didn't intend to say that we shouldn't have anything go by there. But the letter should be just as clean and simple as possible.
Right, don't start fires before you.
Yeah, that's, that's what could happen.
Yeah.
And we're not, I don't, I think we're, we're not trying to start fires every time. We'd rather, and then when they come in, say, just like you said, here's some ideas, and what we think is worth. But send it out with a letter.
That is what I meant by a framework. It doesn't have details.
It's not like we're all saying the same thing.
So we either go through it today, or we go through it next week. You get that framework.
I'm just setting up so that we can be done that month is going to be here.
Don't we have a rough framework already, though?
Yeah, we have a rough framework.
Should we get any more specific than that?
No.
No, yeah, we have.
That's where you cause problems, right?
It's one phase we don't get.
Right.
We have enough of them already.
We, we can sit down in four weeks with that rough framework and say, this is what we're looking at. These are the ideas that we have, so we can get feedback on it. And, and it would be better to do that, because at that point, we can go through and if there's stuff that's, people are just adamantly opposed to, we can pull it out and we can make all the necessary corrections without spending a year working up all of the details.
At least they got three days down there.
Do they have lights?
No, we don't have lights anywhere now.
Richard. So Mr. Chair, now we have.
I have a question. I didn't start it.
He didn't, that was my fault. Okay, the next item.
Didn't start it.
Of the new format and review of schedule. This is it. Personally, I think we need to have a discussion about the entire ordinance. Because I, I don't know if the board of selectmen will send that through as one ordinance. The way we're developing it, it is one big ordinance. And I don't know, and, and I, I can't ask Dan to look at his crystal ball.
Why not? We have to all, right?
To, to determine what the board of selectmen would do. But I'm terrified that if we send this through, we've, we've got a couple of people in the Town House Corner district that aren't going to like it. We're going to have a couple of people in the DB1 that aren't going to like it, a couple of people. And it's only going to take three or four people in each one of these districts, and the whole thing will get shot down. Part of me looks at it and says, okay, that's not a bad thing. We've gone through, we've put together what we think is a good ordinance. And if it gets shot down at town, at the town meeting, then we know and we can start all over again. But part of me says, do we want to do that? Or do we want to come up with all of these districts? We have the Town House Corner district, we have the DB1, we have DB2. We could work up Gateway, and we could work up a framework that we could hang those on and give them out as separate items to the board of selectmen to pass on.
Are they going to put them out separately?
I have no idea. That's, that's what scares, if they're going to put them out separately, then, then I don't have a problem. I'm afraid that.
But you can't because they're interrelated.
They actually still can put them out separately.
If they were completely independent of each other, that would be great, but they are.
But I think we could put together a framework that we could then take Town House Corner district and stick it in there and have the framework with, with Town House Corner completely independent. If Town House Corner failed, everything else would still survive.
Well, let's put this way. The way you got businesses in this town, hawks, skippers, jump all over the place. You better turn around and have separate. Because the fact is, if you put. Because the fact is, if you put it in one package, it will snow off and it won't pass.
In hindsight, I think a better approach, and I don't know if it's too late to do this, would have been to reformat the existing one without changes. Put it into each zone separately. Then, once that's done, then we could have approved or worked on one at a time. But I don't know if it's too late. I don't think it is. I think we'll be going several years with this track.
I don't think it's too late to do that. It just scares me that, especially after what we saw take place in the Townhouse Corner District. It's not going to take a great deal of effort at the town meeting to derail the entire ordinance. And that has a whole package and that's what scares me about it.
But how can we separate it? John said it is all interrelated. It would be conflict if one piece passed and another didn't.
Well, it's just like you said.
Is it?
None.
Yes, Mr. Clarence.
Well, I give this a lot of thought and as we had discussed, we can work on the frame. Because the thing that relates to the sections is those sections of the frame that conflict. But we could get the framework in place in such a state, we could slide in sections like modules, sort of like blades in a server. So what we want to do is build the server and then put in the blades. And that might be a way, a better way to do it, which would mean we would shift focus. And it's not to say we don't continue working on districts. We're almost, we got the BI and the Gateway and we're done with the business districts. And the comp plan committee is still working with the residential. So that might give us some breathing time there to shift over, work on the performance standards and the other language of performance standards, the processes, all those things that are going to be in support of the districts. Get those all squared away and then what we would do, for safety's sake, we'd change our existing, let's say CCS district if we had. Change that and put it into this format, into this format that we have right now. And then that would be in there. We could pull that out and put in the DB1 and the DB2.
So in effect, what you're saying, it makes logical sense, but I'm not sure that it makes logistical sense because you would have to rewrite the existing ordinance to fit within that framework while we're working on the new pieces that we're going to substitute for the existing pieces. And I think that's pretty complex.
It's a lot of work and it's not very good to do.
And that would also have to be passed.
Yeah. That would have to be, the comp plan would have to be passed, then the framework would have to be passed, then the section would have to be passed.
Well, but the frame.
There would be additions to the comp plan because there would be additions on residential.
But the framework would have to fit the existing ordinance or the existing ordinance would have to be rewritten and passed, I think.
Yeah.
But the framework.
What I don't understand, I guess, in this, sometimes we'll make this a little more complicated than it needs to be, like John wants to get down to a 10-page ordinance and I agree with him. However, moving on with what we're doing, we keep saying that these things are interrelated. They're interrelated by some very specific things. Like you said, the performance standards. We should be able to take our current ordinance, put in any one of these. In our ordinance, we even have pages left blank intentionally. I mean, but we could create a new section that has district-specific regulations and go through and just insert it. With the caveat that for the Gateway District, in addition, you have to take the performance standards out of section 7.86 or whatever. We just put it in there. The town would vote on it separately. It would be in the ordinance and it would just be a few more lines that we've got to put in each, in each of the ones we've done. The interrelationship between these, I think, would be minimal once we started that process. So you'd lose none of the work that you've done. You'd have a new section that would have multiple things in it. And then, when we have the time, after we know what's going to be there, then we can go through and know this stuff about that, the whole regulation and have it there. And you get back to where I think we started at to try to streamline this. What happens is with each one of these, we keep on having to rewrite all of the same stuff. And when we, if we compare from district to district to district, the only difference is there's five feet in this frontage and there's 10 feet in that one. Well, let's make them all eight. You know, and have one district. It's crazy. And we've done an awful lot of work and I'd hate to start another whole process of redoing a whole regulation that has to be approved just like the other. We've got, there's a lot of good work and that would go through to the, not only the districts, but the specifics. I don't know if we put in the contractor storage yards, for example, some of that other work. All of that we can, you could put in to a small individual if they asked you. They don't, doesn't hurt anything. Add a section to your regulars.
That's pretty much what I was thinking. Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm not a resident, Tom Lyman. Tom, I think that's a wonderful idea. I, we've been banging our heads over this over and over again. Ted, if we could, either way you're doing this, it's a lot of work. But if we could take the current ordinance and duplicate the language into every single section without making any changes to the intent or to the language of the ordinance. So we're just duplicating everything that's in there. That's how we have, that's how we have to go about making it so you can repeal and replace sections. And that was the impetus for my saying, wow, you guys have done a lot of incredible work. How do you repeal and replace these sections if you vote on an individual? So you either restructure our current ordinance, which would be just cross-referencing everything that refers to each section, inserting into that section's ordinance so that you have something to compare apples to apples. So the new framework is there. And if they shoot one of them down, it still fits into that framework. You go back and you sat over on that section. Is that possible? The way our current ordinance is written.
Yeah, well, what I've already been doing is, the problem with the ordinance, the reason why you can't mix and match is because the performance standard sections reference the various districts. And that's why if you take this one out, it doesn't cross-reference this and that doesn't cross-reference there. If you take all the specific standards of the districts out of all the performance standards, the general performance standards, and then the performance standards that are specific to the district are in the district regs, then you can easily slide in and out. Now, does that mean that you're going to have to write a CCS, just like you did with the DB1 and 2? Yep, you are. And that's why there won't be a Townhouse Corner section. That'll be R3 or R2 or RR, whatever the comp plan committee comes up with.
And just temporarily, you're going to have a 400-page ordinance.
Well, I don't think it's going to.
Why? That is going to get us to the next phase.
I don't think it has to. I think it's going to be less. I think it's going to be a little less. The original objective was to make it easier for the property owners to look in through all these different sections. And if nothing else, we can do that. We've served the demand and the needs. So also, there's nothing controversial about that. We're not really changing.
Regulation.
We're just renumbering the pages, board moving out, just reformatting.
Well, you do have some performance standards you want to come in, guys.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
I'd say keep it at a minimal.
So in doing that, really we're allowed to be, you know, that would be the very first article and it would be, it should be first article, but it would be one article to say, look, we've taken today's ordinance and we've written today's ordinance, nothing has changed. But we've written today's ordinance so that we can stop plugging in all these modules. So that should be an easy sell. And then if you had time and you've already got some of these modules put in, then you could go in and vote on those. You know, I mean, it would be my preference to separate these and make them a bunch of different one-words.
But if I may, at the same time, if you're not changing the intent, you're just changing the format, you don't need to vote because you haven't changed, you're only changing the way it's laid out. You're not changing anything in the context of the ordinance. And if you're doing it that way, then you don't need to vote. This is presented to you, this is our current ordinance, and it's been reformatted. We haven't changed any definitions. We have changed nothing at this point. But this is how the ordinance is going to be laid out now. You don't need to vote on that.
Sure.
Because you haven't made any changes other than, the minuteest changes are your page numbers, your headings. If the intent and the will of that ordinance has not changed, you've taken all the words out of this one and changed it to this one. You haven't done anything different. I can check with the attorney to verify that, but I'm almost 100% certain. If you're not changing the context of your ordinance, you're just changing the way it's laid out, you don't need to vote on it. Right, there's no substantive change whatsoever.
And that would be good because then we would be able to hang things on there and say, okay. We would be able to take DB1 and hang it on there so that it would fit in. We'd be able to do the same with any of the other districts that we were working on. Donnie?
Sometimes with something this complex, I find it helps to look at, what's the final product going to look like before you worry about how am I going to get there? And having sat in the audience and watched you guys work for years, the major problem I see is that the land use ordinance is cumbersome and confusing because you're going from, you know, here to there and then somebody else finds another section that applies and you end up chasing yourselves around the ordinance. In working on the comp plan committee this time around, I've given this piece a lot of thought. And what I envision is a land use ordinance almost being set up in terms of chapters. So if, as an applicant, a property owner, I come in and I say, okay, I have some land in DB1 and I want to do something there. If the planning, if the planning hand me a little booklet that says DB1, everything you wanted to know and more, and that's all I need to look at. So that all of the standard, the performance standards and the rules and regulations for DB1 are right there. And I don't need to look at, I don't need to look at shoreline zoning. I just need to look at that. And the same thing would be true for the residential districts. I just bought a piece of property in R1. What can I do? What can't I do? Here's R1. And then those things which are not applicable to any district in particular, but the town in general, you know, shoreline zoning, that overlaps a lot of things. That's a whole separate section. But if the place that I'm concerned about doesn't involve the shoreline zoning rules, I don't need to know that even exists. And that would make your job a lot easier because when the applicant comes in and they have questions about this or you have questions of them, you're all looking at just a few pieces of paper. So in effect, you get to the proverbial 10-page ordinance for each applicant, even though your whole ordinance is bigger.
That was the original intent of this revision when we started, how many years ago?
It still is and that's what we're doing.
The intent is when I came in, we're pulling a section out.
Oh, by the way, yeah, you're building a road. You'll need this section. And, you know, yeah, you do need general performance standards. So take the general performance standards because you're not going to repeat them in every section. Because any ordinance is going to be 400 pages long. So here are the general standards and here's the R1. Oh, you want to build a road? Okay, here's the road construction stuff. That's it. That's what the whole intent has always been, you know, so. We don't have to make huge copies for people and do this for everyone. But it's so much easier for them because you've seen it, this board has seen it many times where somebody comes in with a proposal, you think we're all set and somebody remembers, oh, what about section 6.2.3.8.5? Bob's famous for finding the landmines, you know, and says, oh, we forgot about this. And then suddenly the applicant has to go back and redo things because they're hidden in their old booby traps. That's been the whole intent is to get rid of the booby traps.
And they come across as patches from the property.
Oh, yeah, it's really bad.
That's not fair.
So we've identified most of them now so they don't curl like they used to. But that's what Donna's saying is what this board has been working towards. It doesn't look it, but we've been slowly creeping our way towards that. It's the framework that, you know, to plug these modules in that we need to do. I'm a little terrified of taking the whole ordinance and making it the way it is now, but that can be done. It's just a huge amount of work. Do that and then do this. So then we end the system, right?
If you talk to Southern Plainland and the Nellie Council, not really, I mean, we pay dues to them. Say, listen, this is a project we need to do and we need done. And we need no changes to be made, but we need it to fit into a repeal and replace ordinance style and get a price for that. It would be worth it rather than having staff such as yourself who's got other things to do, now start dissecting our current ordinance in order to make it fit. That's the piece I missed. And Tom, I'm really glad you said that because I've been trying to. I've been banging my head against the wall. I know a complete repeal and replace and a rundle, more than likely isn't going to happen. But if we can do it that way and have somebody dissect that one, I don't know if it's interns or if there's students working on NASCAR's degrees right now. But we can find a way to have that. I will check with the attorney first thing tomorrow morning. I'll email the entirety of the planning board and let her know. I believe that we can do that as long as we're not changing the context or we're not changing any of the meaning in that ordinance. We're just changing the way it's written so that we can get it to the voters to make a decision. And I will go to the board of selectmen and ask them to authorize me to find someone who can help us do that.
That would, that's the way we pull blades in and out.
So I think from a board point of view, I think we need to authorize that.
Here's the chair.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that everybody is, we're all on the same page. I think that would be a great thing. I don't know. Do we need a motion?
No.
No, I don't think we need a motion. I think it's just, it's the consensus of the board that that would proceed forward.
I think it's pretty in hand.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, Murray?
I didn't say no.
Okay, that's a good sign. Okay, good. The other thing that we're probably going to have to look at is if we want to get this ready in time for the June meeting, that means that we have to have it ready for a public hearing no later than the beginning of March. Because if we have to make any changes, we need some time. And if we're going to do that, then we're going to have to meet almost every year.
Question. To hang call classification of framework before anything is done, do we not have a special meeting coming up in November for town?
I can't imagine it, Tom. We'll never make town in November.
No, my question was to classify for discussion of framework.
You mean to get out ahead and let people be aware of what's going on?
No, so that we turn out, if we put it out to it, so it's there already, the word framework, how we're setting it up, is approved. That's what I was just saying. Just to turn around to, like you said.
Do the chair. I will verify tomorrow once again, but I don't believe, none of the residents need to vote on the framework. So I will verify that tomorrow and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to scorn anyone by saying that, but the town shouldn't care, shouldn't have to weigh in on how it's laid out as long as we're not changing anything. So let me verify that with the attorneys. I'll email you as soon as I have a response there. And that sounds like the easiest way to make this complicated thing able to be voted on.
Okay. That being said, I still think we're going to have to end up meeting. We're looking at about.
Looking at six months to March.
Yep. Well, we're looking at about 16 weeks before we get it ready to finalize everything and bring it to a public hearing.
Yeah, will the RSU let us be here?
They may not need to go to public hearing if we get, you know, the people from your board.
We're going to have some stuff that we want to hang on there. And I don't...
That's the issue that you're working on now, right? That should continue on.
Yes.
With the framework of the ordinance. If that doesn't have a public hearing of us.
Yeah, okay, you're right.
I will try to find someone to dissect that ordinance and put it into a framework that would work. And possibly even propose a framework for us that would work. Do you have a framework you want?
Yeah, I've got a framework. It's already set up.
That's what we'll do is...
That's what we've been working on. We have the framework all set. Because we're plugging in blue pieces of it.
That's what this is for.
Yeah, then it's to take this existing current document.
Put it in for that.
In case anything around.
Put it in for that.
Exactly.
Again, we've already got the framework.
That's what I'm saying, is independent of the board's discussion. Now, there may be some desires of the board that we want to integrate in, and that can be done at the normal town meeting, when we have, when we're discussing new zones and everything else.
We've already done some performance standards. We've already done a lot of performance standards that are in there now.
So you all can continue doing your work around the new stuff. We'll get the rest of it taken care of in the back.
You know, my only concern is that, you know, we've got three of the districts done. DV one, DV two, Townhouse Corner.
We actually have BI, but there's some changes you want to make.
Make some changes to BI. Maybe it's just me, but in June, I'd like to have it all done. Even if, you know, there's separate articles that get voted on, but I'd like to have it all done, so we can put it behind us. We've been at this for, how many years? Three?
Eight.
Three years?
One.
Four.
Yeah, more than that.
One or two, yeah.
Probably closer to five if we start to look at it. We've been at this for quite a long time.
We've been at peace meetings.
Yes, we have been at peace meetings.
We've been at peace meetings.
And changing, and changing, and changing.
With your comments, are you saying comprehensive every zoning district?
I think that would be nice, but that depends on the comprehensive plan. But we can get all of the business districts tied up. We haven't even looked at CCS? CCN?
Put it, yeah, put it in simple terms, will you?
The Alfred Road.
The Alfred Road section. We haven't even looked at it, but...
Marty, it's been CCN for how many years now? I don't know that by now.
No.
I don't think we're gonna find R to be much different than it is now.
That's it.
Larger building size.
You had a commercial in the work.
Yes, and I...
Do you change it every year, so how you can remember where you live?
I think we're in pretty good shape if we take this approach. I think we're touched upon every district except SSN so far. And even that, we have a whole... The shore land is changed, remember that?
Yeah, shoreline is changed. We've got to look at the Gateway District.
Is that state and federal?
CCN.
Don't forget you got federal, but they're gonna have a high Walmart.
So we've got the VI, which is almost up, a couple of adjustments to it.
Yeah.
We've got CCN and the Gateway District. And one small adjustment on Townhouse Corner, because we never decided about contract yards two. I was looking in the meeting, in the minutes of the meeting, we didn't make that decision. We put it off. We said, contract yards one is allowed down there. We never discussed the issue. We tabled it, because we ran out of time at the meeting.
So we have to deal with two?
We have to decide whether or not we want to allow two in the Townhouse Corner District. Which is a pretty straightforward...
You had an outburst from the public, and then you ended the discussion and moved on.
That's right.
I will just add one concern that I've heard recurring from the public on contractor storage yards two, is that ten thousand gallons of fuel storage in that district is overkill. That's what I've been hearing through all of the turmoil we've been going through. John Hughes stores twenty-eight hundred gallons, and he sells it. I've spoken to some contractors who say anything over five hundred. The town of Arundel has three thousand gallons. So that is a, that was a concern in that district that I wanted to pass on, but as you go forward in the process, there's no, I was told there's no need for a ten thousand gallon storage capacity.
Excuse me?
How many gallons you got, Marty?
What, per waste oil or fuel oil?
Any oil. Any petroleum product that's on your property, do you have?
I've got a three hundred gallon oil tank.
Okay.
And I have my other, my waste oil tanks. But my question is, you said you only have a two thousand gallon, you have a ten thousand gallon tank in the ground, and each of his oil trucks are at least twenty-five hundred. So if you turn it, add your numbers up.
That's for distribution, though, Marty.
Still a tank.
It is still a tank.
It's still a tank, because you could turn on, have a contractor have a truck like that, and it's still distribution, and it's still a tank.
But it's a contractor's storage yard. I'm not speaking for Phil, but he owns it.
No, no, no.
He owns an excavator company. I'm just gonna use him as an example. Phil isn't gonna spend the money to buy ten thousand gallon diesel to put on his site as many trucks as he has, knowing that next week, the price of diesel can drop twenty-five cents. So that's just, that is, that's feedback that I've gotten in my office, that that may not have gone in that board. So that's a lot of, that's a lot of energy.
You have to have much milk, you buy.
Well, milk is not controlling it, hopefully.
The reason, the price fluctuates.
We have a separate fuel storage, do you know?
Yeah, we do, yes.
So that are different. That shouldn't be in our contract.
Well, we do, because contractors do it. They give tanks, they do it, they're fueling their equipment. They take it on-site if they're working a big job, or else they fuel the trucks there, at that location.
Or they have trucks sold to them.
They just go to them, but the issue is that it's not a storage yard. Remember, it's a contractor yard. It is an operation site. And it could be as small as a two-man, three-man operation with four, you know, triaxes. Or it could be shelters.
My only point was that ten thousand should be a little bit of fuel.
I can't even remember. I got the ten thousand.
Well, I remember, and I've been trying to say that. Contractor's storage can be any contractor, not just excavators. And if you're a distribution, an oil distribution contractor, and you run a tanker, that's ten thousand gallons. That's where it came from. A tanker truck is ten thousand gallons. So you might be storing it temporarily while you're going to your next destination tomorrow.
But also, like a three oh, okay, so you're saying a three oh six DMT tank.
Right. That's where it came from.
Well, you should discuss that in a formula.
Just wanted to break it up and thank you.
And transport does have those.
Yes.
Ten thousand gallons, out wheels.
And that's the question, is if it's a stationary unit as a fuel storage yard, or if it's just sitting there overnight, because they don't work twenty-four hours a day?
It was, I think, originally meant to be a, thank you, John, because it wasn't three oh six we were talking about.
So maybe it was something to stick on the agenda to discuss.
I don't have any other, how old I'm like.
Would you like a little heads up in terms of where the comprehensive plan committee is going in the next couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay.
In Florida.
Unfortunately, are we not?
We're not allowed out of town.
You're not allowed out of town. You know, if you're not careful, you're gonna rail all the time.
Our feathers, yes. We're currently working on R one, R two, R three. Unless something goes horribly wrong, I would expect that we will have a set of proposed words within the next meeting or two, which means the October or November meeting. Once we have something that we as a committee are content with, it would possibly make sense for us to meet jointly with you folks, so that you can look at what we are intending, and then if your schedule allows, make any adjustments you might need to make. And then ideally, in a perfect world, the comp plan revisions and any planning board revisions could all go to town meeting in June at the same time. Just hopefully pass the comp plan piece first, and if that passes, then the planning, the land use ordinance piece will have no problem.
In your process done, are you having your brothers and the residents come in?
At this stage of the game, no, because we're not looking at any major major changes. Mostly what we're doing is we're cleaning up the language, so it's actually English. And it's clear and concise. And we're tweaking it, I would say, as opposed to anything major. So I don't think it's gonna cause any major problems in that respect. The one place that we will be inviting some folks in is, we're rather intent on following lot lines as opposed to random straight lines through the middle of town. So where lots are apparently split, but would then not be split in a couple of cases, that puts people in two different districts. And we want to confirm with those landowners and see where we want to be and why. The other thing we're looking at is a couple of proposed use changes for larger lots. So that might also involve some discussion with those landowners. But the basic stuff for R one, R two in particular, it's not anything major.
Do you think we could probably have a joint meeting in December?
That would be my goal. I will keep you apprised. Yeah, maybe, but I don't know. Hate to promise sooner than postpone itself.
I think that gives us, actually, that'd give us quite a bit, especially if we could get that rewrite taken care of. That is report.
Really, not much to report since our last meeting. However, we do have some movement on a few parcels with some new projects that might be coming along. I shouldn't say projects, but some new tenants that might be coming in. There were a couple of parcels that are vacant, and we're working with them right now to help them expedite the process. I can't really feel that information now, but I'll be able to at the next meeting. In terms of, I have not received any new applications, except for, we do have now three more exemptions. By the way, exemptions that staff review are gonna be dealing with. Again, dealing with the issue of...
Right, right.
By the way, so we're gonna be resolving those three. We have no other, I have one other staff level review coming that we'll be doing for a business expansion. And I did talk to some property, to a business owner today. We will probably be having an expansion coming to an existing business on, in the CCS district that will be coming to you guys, because it's sufficient size to play any wood. So we do have business activity that is occurring. We have no subdivisions on the horizon at this point, still. And no discussions here, just lots splits and family divisions. That's all we've got going right now, but no large subdivision. I want to also make something very clear, that there was a little bit of confusion about. I did mention at the last meeting about our age restricted community that's coming to us. Perhaps community was a poor choice of words, because there was an assumption out in the landscape that that was a large, very huge project that's coming with a new community. It's not. It's going to be about maybe six, seven units. That's not a, that's not quite a community. That's still in development stage. And technically, that will be a subdivision, but it is basically planned. But it is not, just for the audience, it is not a new community.
What's the new steel structure going up at the lower end of Route one? I can't place that one.
Yeah.
That's Lord Boys.
Oh, okay.
They've been looking along very well, very nice.
I couldn't relate the map that we approved to the location.
It's changed a bit since we last worked in it. We've done a lot of filling, did significant cutting, did all the fillings. Done a lot very nice there, I know.
I think it's a lot different.
It's much different, isn't it?
A little gray, a little lighter than them. Lot of, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's wonderful.
Anything on our last vice secretary?
I will tell you about that. We will, Anna will no longer be the planning board secretary. She will not be attending meetings. She has some other responsibilities she has to do. The town manager will be looking into alternative ways that we can have live bodies here, instead of just relying on the camera and the audio recording. But for the moment, that's the way we'll be doing it, is we will be just doing the live recordings and having those transcribed. How quickly we can get a live person here, I don't know. That all depends on what you have for finances. And finding the right persons, just don't get anybody, some of you have some experience in doing this. Ian's done a great job.
Yes, she has. She said after twelve years of doing it, she just needs a break. There's no offense to any of you.
We need a break too.
Yeah, exactly. She's been doing some volunteering, and what I'll be doing, in-house, I really can't justify the cost of paying a town employee that we currently have the overtime to come to these meetings. So we'll be looking outside, find, a lot of communities have just minute takers that'll show up two, three, four nights a month, so that they can make a little extra money. And so we'll be looking for somebody like that. Everybody knows anybody more than welcome to send than me, but I'll be discussing it with the board of selectmen at the next meeting. We'll post it on the meeting website. Hopefully, we'll be able to find a local person who's interested in doing it. But until then, Ian has agreed that she'll listen to the recording and watch the video, and be able to leave the next event.
So you're all welcome to say goodbye to her.
Goodbye. Love you!
I just wanted, before you adjourn, I wanted to let you know, you did another email on this, but the date that's been selected for, I think you all got the email.
October first.
Go ahead, Rich. October first will be the board and committee workshop. For those of you who've been on the board a while, the attorney will come in and just talk to us about rules of the roads, process and procedures to boards, just to make sure that we don't get ourselves into any legal hot water or any trouble. It's good to have a refresher. We have members like Jamie and several new members on other boards and committees who have never sat through this training. Rather than give you a manual, I expect you to read eighteen hours of material. We'll have a couple hour session with Leah, and she'll answer all the questions that you might have. So we'll do that on October first, seven o'clock. If you can't make it, I'm going to make sure with her, but I'll let you videotape the session, so I can give discs or put it up on the website if you're able to watch. It's a Wednesday? It's a Wednesday, yes, sir.
It's gonna be at seven?
Seven PM, right here.
You approved your best group order, right?
I have. I've reserved the room, Marty.
Any other business?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. Motion's made in second, it all favor.
Yeah.
Have a way of those?
Nope.